Kim in the booth, you ready? Awesome. Call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council Monday, November 8, 2021. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames?
Here.
Copeland?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Here.
Houseman?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Yeah.
And Guanci?
I am here. Counselor Copeland, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in the God of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. I would ask everybody to please keep the family of Michael O'Donnell in their thoughts and prayers. Mr. O'Donnell was a, one of the first parking enforcement officers here in the city of Beverly, lifelong Beverly resident. He passed away last week. Let's go to resolutions, and we have Order Number 204. Counselor Ames is going to the podium, and she's going to talk about the Ellis Square Friends.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
It's really nice to see a packed city hall. Tonight, we're here to honor the people who volunteer and support Ellis Square Friends. They are practical, out-of-the-box thinkers. They are doers. Ward Three is unique. Like all of us, I represent many middle-class neighborhoods. I also represent folks with food and housing insecurity, people who spend every day trying to make do with less than they need to survive. For them, it's a lonely, endless struggle. Ellis Square has taught me about these folks and how to advocate for them. Ellis Square Friends is a dream that has become a reality. It's all about courageously connecting, sharing, and building community with patience and love. ESF boldly goes where most of us won't. My hero is giving a lecture series in L.A. this week. Last night, she spoke of freedom as aspirational and coming from an incomplete place. Tonight, I'm borrowing her insight. Freedom requires courage and the dream of something better. You know what has happened to you does not say everything about you. There is always something else you can be, and you can change and you can create. As a city counselor who has fiercely advocated for the people of Ward Three, especially those who have less than they need, I gain inspiration from people who dare to be both tradition keepers and tradition breakers, people who know they are truly faithful to their community when they have enough chutzpah to challenge its certainties. This is who we need to be. We have to be daring enough together to try. So, the Beverly City Council recognizes Ellis Square Friends as a grassroots nonprofit, all-volunteer organization, providing support and practical solutions for food and resource-insecure residents of our city, whereas Ellis Square Friends was created to help less fortunate neighbors facing food insecurity, current homelessness, or limited means to survive. Ellis Square Friends fills these gaps by sharing surplus items donated by many in the community and beyond. Their mission is to provide food, clothing, and whatever resources they can to help people survive and, in some instances, find housing, whereas in 2016, Brenda Matos, the founder of Ellis Square Friends, started serving sandwiches and water out of her car to feed people in Ellis Square. She understood there was a greater need, so she sought resources to provide a weekly dinner. She engages with people she feeds to connect with and support them however possible. Brenda has a great knowledge of the social net and helps them connect with the resources they need, whereas Julie Archibald works in partnership with Brenda Matos to create a larger organization to support their goals of kindness and compassion. Julie is a hard-working and collaborative, steady force behind the scenes, whereas the key COVID volunteers, Mary Rosson, Pat Sparrow, Michelle Carreri, Chris Booty, and Jamie Mers, show up faithfully every Thursday night during the pandemic to pack dinner bags and provide constant assistance whenever asked, whereas ESF has successfully energized the local food establishments to donate meals for dinners. SuperSub, Cafe Salerno, Fiverr McGee's, Beverly Salem Elks, Greg's Tavern, Harold's Chicken Pies, Panera Bread, Olive Garden's Stop &amp; Shop, Brendan Crocker and their, Brenda's dear cousins, Clara Santos and Lucia Navis, all cook for Ellis Square Friends, whereas Ellis Square Friends has a Facebook group with more than 2,200 members, hundreds of volunteers, and local community members and beyond who donate to this all-volunteer cause. ESF is a completely self-sustaining volunteer organization, serving the population with the least power and the most need. Falling under the Church of Living Hope, 501(c)(3) umbrella, ESF is an official nonprofit, whereas since 2018, ESF has been serving 40 to 85 people per week, hot meals, and in addition, a lunch and a nonperishable bonus bag on Thursday evenings through the pandemic with a team of five dedicated volunteers. They are sustainable to their core composting, recycling, and reducing waste at every opportunity, whereas ESF has created meal delivery, a meal delivery model during COVID, keeping everyone safe. Every Thursday evening, well-organized volunteer teams deliver 30 to 45 dinner bags full of food and toiletries throughout Beverly to those who are homebound or who are unable to access the church, whereas ESF has created an art program whereby local children wishing to volunteer can decorate lunch bags. Hundreds of bags have been decorated, instilling a sense of volunteerism and pride to our local children and providing joy to our diners. Children at our local preschools, elementary schools, homeschool groups, private schools, and within family and neighborhood groups have decorated bags, whereas ESF goes the extra mile to work with the Beverly Police Department Community Impact Unit to support our currently homeless population, often paying for hotel rooms to keep folks out of cold and inclement weather. ESF also helps with paperwork to obtain important documents like birth certificates, social security cards, and with filling out housing forms. Now, therefore, be it known that the Beverly City Council, on behalf of the residents of Beverly, wishes to express the utmost gratitude for the hard work and dedication of Ellis Square Friends and our two Ward Three residents right here in our community in order that the city clerk spread a copy of this resolution on the city records. Thank you.
Wow, thank you so much. Amazing. On behalf of Brenda Matos, this incredible human being and our incredible crew at Ellis Square Friends, Michelle Carreri, one of our stellar crew members, is right over here. Thank you, Counselor Ames, not only for this amazing recognition, but for being such an active voice for our neighbors in need over the past two years. Absolutely amazing. You've shown up without asking. You've done our dishes. You've served our meals. And, most importantly, what you've done over the past years is you've taken time to listen, to talk, to find out what our diners need, and you are active. You give them a voice where they do not feel they have a voice. It's very powerful, and they know it, and they love you. Thank you so much. We are all very grateful. We look forward to the day when we can hand out our last meal and we don't have to do this anymore, but until then, we will continue serving those in need in our community with the unending help of our amazing and compassionate, selfless volunteers and community donors. We simply could not do this without our volunteers and our donors. That's the only reason we can do this. It's amazing what everyone in our community has stepped up to do. And lastly, please know that everyone here, you all have an open invitation to come and visit us on a Thursday night, to spend time with us, to see and talk to our neighbors in need, and we can always use help with the dishes. So, thank you so much. This is an amazing recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Julie, and, of course, thank you, Counselor Ames. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. Now, let's move on to Order Number 205. Counselor Ames, are you going to go back up to the podium along with Counselor Flowers, please?
And perhaps, I was hoping, Counselor Rand?
Counselor Rand, sure.
Thank you.
And Counselor Houseman, if you would like. The more the merrier.
I think I've read it known for a while.
And don't tell me you're shy, Counselor Houseman.
I just want to say that Dawn is family for me. This is, I'm glad we're here and we're doing this. This is personal for me because we have Thanksgiving together, we're friends, but, most importantly, we are family, so.
All right. We're all being very polite here.
No, we're all, well, Counselor Rand, we are out of practice.
Yes, and it's actually really nice to be in person here and especially to deliver this resolution in person to Counselor Copeland. So, this is a resolution recognizing the historic appointment and service of Dominick Copeland as Ward Six City Counselor, whereas eight qualified residents of Ward Six in Beverly applied to fill the remaining term for Ward Six City Counselor upon declaration of a vacancy in accordance with Beverly's city charter, including Dominick Copeland, who was nominated based on his previous service to the city as vice president for Beverly Youth Football, coach for Beverly Youth Football, and Beverly Youth Basketball, and worked teaching in Beverly Public Schools and volunteering with various organizations in Beverly, and... Whereas, in December 2020, the final vote for Dominick Copeland was unanimous with all counselors present and voting, and Dominick Copeland was sworn in becoming the first person of color and first Black American to serve as a counselor on the Beverly City Council, and...
Whereas Dominick Copeland began working for his ward immediately and powerfully, his constituent work was robust. He was able to secure $20,000 for the Wentworth Todd Lot Revitalization Project and $6,000 per year to reinstate the Dix Park Summer Youth Park Program, resolve issues at Pete's Park with the help of Mayor Cahill and the team of city officials consisting of Commissioner Mike Collins, Director of Parks and Recreation, and Community Services Bruce Stoig, and Chief of Police John Littleshore. Helped constituents at Middlebury Lane get damaged sidewalks repaired, helped constituents on Cole Street get flooding issues resolved, support constituents on Haskell and High Streets to get down power lines and electrical outages taken care of, as well as a host of other numerous constituent concerns, and whereas...
Whereas Counselor Copeland and all the councilors, city officials, and staff all worked during one of the most difficult times in history amongst the COVID-19 pandemic, social unrest, climate change, and financial uncertainty, and came together for the best interests of the city of Beverly, embodying the best democratic government and concept of "together we rise," and whereas Counselor Dominick Copeland was fully supported by his wonderful family consisting of his wife Shannon Copeland and their four children, Alex, Xavier, Gabe, and Elijah, along with mother-in-law Dawn.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Beverly does hereby recognize not only the historic appointment of Dominick Copeland to the Beverly City Council as Ward Six Counselor, but also his profound and powerful service in that role. Be it recognized that Dominick Copeland is the first person of color and first Black American to serve as a counselor on the Beverly City Council, thus creating a more representative council than at any other time in Beverly history. Let the record show that Dominick Copeland served with both honor and integrity and was fully dedicated to the constituents of Ward Six. This truly was a special moment in time for the city of Beverly, and order that the city clerk spread a copy of this resolution upon the city records.
Counselor Copeland, a few words?
Counselor President?
Yes.
If I may, before we ask Counselor Copeland to speak, I have a couple of words I'd like to share as well.
Please do.
Thank you. Mr. President and fellow counselors, tonight, we recognize the service of Dominick Copeland as Ward Six City Counselor, whose term started with his unanimous election by this council on December 21, 2020. On that December night, we were faced with an embarrassment of riches in the stellar quality of available candidates, including the past and future City Councilor Matt St. Halaire, whose recent election will once again find him on the council. When I nominated Dominick Copeland for consideration by the council, this is what I said. Elections are about the future, shaped by the moment, candidates, and issues at hand. His candidacy speaks to this moment in our city's history as a microcosm of our nation's history. His candidacy speaks to the aspiration of our city to become a place where all are truly welcome. Since Counselor Copeland's election by this council, I've served with him on the city's Racial Equity Task Force and on the Economic Subcommittee of that task force, which he has chaired. He has challenged and encouraged the task force to devote itself to outreach and services for Black entrepreneurs in the city, to create programs for Black youth job creation, and to teach financial literacy for underserved members of our community, and to set a goal to empower increased Black homeownership in Beverly. His voice has been unique in talking about such an agenda in the task force. I hope we will commit, as city counselors, to attend to this agenda, notwithstanding Counselor Copeland's future absence. Discussing and addressing issues of race are easily pushed aside or forgotten if you do not experience the consequences of being Black yourself. This is certainly the case for me, but we know that slavery had its place in Beverly's history, and we know that while hidden, largely hidden from view, hidden from the daily experience of white people in Beverly, it remains ready to emerge when we are not looking. Simply consider this in regard to the recent events at our school committee meeting on September 8. But there is great value in having conversations about race in Beverly because, as a community, I think we aspire to assuring that our city is, and always will be, a place where all are truly welcome. I hope our aspirations will be realized. We had an historic election recently wherein Ward Three and Ward Six candidates of color participated in one of the highest callings of our democracy, putting forth their names as candidates for elective office, and a Black woman ran and led Counselor Copeland in Ward Six, received credible returns on her candidacy for mayor. I hope this means we are making progress to a point where it will be unremarkable in Beverly that candidates of color will run and hold a credible expectation that they will be elected. This council, with its election of Counselor Copeland, has fully participated in our city's journey towards racial progress in Beverly, and Counselor Copeland, by simply and credibly fully participating in the electoral process, has advanced the day when, in Beverly, candidates running for office can know that they will be judged and elected not on the basis of the color of their skin, but on the content of their character. So, I thank Counselor Copeland for his service in office, and I feel assured he'll continue to provide community leadership in Beverly in the months and years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Austin. Counselor Copeland?
I just wanted to thank you, Counsel President. Just wanted to say thank you to everybody, and it's great to see everybody here. This is truly what democracy is about, everyone being involved and in the process. We made history, we made some changes, and a few months ago, after I was in the hospital with COVID, and I was still dealing with the hip surgery, and then my wife had to have surgery for cancer, I asked myself, what am I doing all this for? I was like, can I do it, first of all, because I wasn't sure that I could do it, I could run, make the run that I needed to make, now against all those odds, but the reason why I did it was because of what I said in the beginning. I just wanted the opportunity to make a difference. It was never about me, it was about the people. I was like, so, for the people that believed in me, for the people that believe in a better tomorrow for Beverly and what we can be, that's why I chose to run. That's why I chose to get up, take each step, even though each step hurt, and even though John kept pushing me, next house, up the next hill, let's keep going, and I'm glad that he did because you need people like that in your life to keep you going, to keep you motivated, to keep you focused, and I hope that me being here has been able to help make a difference for the better and for tomorrow. The work is not done. Beverly's a great place, but we can make it better, we can make it greater, so we have the seeds to move forward and make a better tomorrow than we have today. So, I thank all of you for your belief, all of you for your confidence, all of you for your faith, and all of you for the continued work that you do here in Beverly, because that's what's most important. Together we rise. We can only make a difference together, so I look forward to carrying forward, seeing all you doing the same. I know the city council is going to continue to do great work, and I appreciate your belief in me and having me here. So, thank you, everyone, and let's continue forward and onward. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. I would entertain a motion to wholeheartedly approve the resolution.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. I would entertain a motion to take a brief recess until 7:30, and we'll start back up at 7:30 with our public hearing on Order 190.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. We'll be back in five. Thank you so much. Thank you. Wow, thank you so much.
Amazing. On behalf of Brenda Matos, this incredible human being and our incredible crew at Ellis Square Friends, Michelle Carreri, one of our stellar crew members, is right over here. Thank you, Counselor Ames, not only for this amazing recognition, but for being such an active voice for our neighbors in need over the past two years. Absolutely amazing. You've shown up without asking. You've done our dishes. You've served our meals, and, most importantly, what you've done over the past two years is you've taken time to listen, to talk, to find out what our diners need, and you are active. You give them a voice where they do not feel they have a voice. It's very powerful, and they know it, and they love you. Thank you so much. We are all very grateful. We look forward to the day when we can hand out our last meal and we don't have to do this anymore, but until then, we will continue serving those in need in our community with the unending help of our amazing and compassionate, selfless volunteers and community donors. We simply could not do this without our volunteers and our donors. That's the only reason we can do this. It's amazing what everyone in our community has stepped up to do. And lastly, please know that everyone here, you all have an open invitation to come and visit us on a Thursday night, to spend time with us, to see and talk to our neighbors in need, and we can always use help with the dishes. So, thank you so much. This is an amazing recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Julie, and, of course, thank you, Counselor Ames. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. We'll be back in five. Thank you so much. Thank you. We are all very grateful. We look forward to the day when we can hand out our last meal and we don't have to do this anymore, but until then, we will continue serving those in need in our community with the unending help of our amazing and compassionate, selfless volunteers and community donors. We simply could not do this without our volunteers and our donors. That's the only reason we can do this. It's amazing what everyone in our community has stepped up to do. And lastly, please know that everyone here, you all have an open invitation to come and visit us on a Thursday night, to spend time with us, to see and talk to our neighbors in need, and we can always use help with the dishes. So, thank you so much. This is an amazing recognition. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Julie, and, of course, thank you, Counselor Ames. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. We'll be back in five. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Austin. Counselor Copeland?
I just wanted to thank you, Counsel President. Just wanted to say thank you to everybody, and it's great to see everybody here. This is truly what democracy is about, everyone being involved and in the process. We made history, we made some changes, and a few months ago, after I was in the hospital with COVID, and I was still dealing with the hip surgery, and then my wife had to have surgery for cancer, I asked myself, what am I doing all this for? I was like, can I do it, first of all, because I wasn't sure that I could do it, I could run, make the run that I needed to make, now against all those odds, but the reason why I did it was because of what I said in the beginning. I just wanted the opportunity to make a difference. It was never about me, it was about the people. I was like, so, for the people that believed in me, for the people that believe in a better tomorrow for Beverly and what we can be, that's why I chose to run. That's why I chose to get up, take each step, even though each step hurt, and even though John kept pushing me, next house, up the next hill, let's keep going, and I'm glad that he did because you need people like that in your life to keep you going, to keep you motivated, to keep you focused, and I hope that me being here has been able to help make a difference for the better and for tomorrow. The work is not done. Beverly's a great place, but we can make it better, we can make it greater, so we have the seeds to move forward and make a better tomorrow than we have today. So, I thank all of you for your belief, all of you for your confidence, all of you for your faith, and all of you for the continued work that you do here in Beverly, because that's what's most important. Together we rise. We can only make a difference together, so I look forward to carrying forward, seeing all you doing the same. I know the city council is going to continue to do great work, and I appreciate your belief in me and having me here. So, thank you, everyone, and let's continue forward and onward. Thank you, and God bless. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. I would entertain a motion to wholeheartedly approve the resolution.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. I would entertain a motion to take a brief recess until 7:30, and we'll start back up at 7:30 with our public hearing on Order 190.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. We'll be back in five. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel President. Thank you, Counselor Copeland. I would entertain a motion to wholeheartedly approve the resolution.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. I would entertain a motion to take a brief recess until 7:30, and we'll start back up at 7:30 with our public hearing on Order 190.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. We'll be back in five. Thank you so much. Thank you. 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 I'd entertain a motion to take...
Take that out.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, hold on. Like from residency? Oh, well, not from residency. Got some park. Interesting.
Where did David go?
Got some teenager park. There's a bag in McDonald's.
Is that him in the background?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, we're good. We have a public hearing. I know we have people that want to speak, but we have to try to play by the rules. And we'll go to our public hearing on order number 190, the CPC fiscal year 2022 budget. Ms. Kent, could you please read that order?
Order number 190, order that the city council of the city of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, November 8th, 2021, at 7:30 PM in council chambers, relative to the proposed Community Preservation Committee FY 2022 budget. And this was in the newspaper on 10/29.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And I was just looking for Mr. Ailes, but he went from there to there because he knew that he was going to speak.
I'm quick.
Brian Ailes, our finance director.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, members of the public. I just wanted to really briefly touch on the procedural order before you. Every year, before the city effectively sets its tax rate in December, we need to make all appropriations before that. This is one appropriation which supports the work that the CPC does on an ongoing basis. They effectively have two pools of funding available to them at any given time. One is the fund balance that exists within the CPC surcharge fund. And in addition to that, annually, we present to the council a budget which carries, effectively, a budget for all the anticipated revenue in the current fiscal year. It doesn't mean they have to spend it in the fiscal year, but we do need to appropriate it before we set the tax rate. So that's why, before you this evening, we have a budget that has been reviewed and approved and recommended by the CPC themselves of 1.217095. That's $1,217,095 for fiscal year 22. That's comprised of two main areas, the first of which is the surcharge on property tax that the community put in place, I believe it was back in... See, someone can help me. Was it 2013?
2013?
2014? Somewhere in that range? That represents about $925,000 of this anticipated revenue. And then in addition to that, because the community adopted the act, we have access to a match component which the state distributes annually. This year, we anticipate the match to be 32.3% of last year's surcharge revenue, and that gets distributed through the Department of Local Services within the Department of Revenue. And that's effectively where the revenues come from. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm here with representatives from the Planning Department and the Community Preservation Committee to answer any questions you may have.
Would anybody else like to speak? Okay. Denise DeChamps is here as staff of the CPC. That Heather behind the mask?
Heather Richter.
Heather Richter, who's been on the CPC since we started back then, and it's great that you're chair. Any questions for Mr. Ailes? Council Ames?
Maybe Council Rand, you go first.
Okay. President?
Is that forewarning that you're going to be a long time?
No, I'm not. I am not at all.
Council Rand?
Thank you. I always just like to have a sense of what the amount is in the different pools of money, if you have that handy.
I do, I do. Although my eyes might not allow me to read it, but I think... Yes. So if this is approved this evening, those funds then become available as well. So within the open space reserve, and Ms. Richter, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's $851,048. Might be 861.
Including... David's 841.
841? Okay. And then, within the Historic Preservation Reserve, 140,941. Within the Community Housing Reserve, we have 14571. And then, within the Undesignated Fund Balance, which is kind of unrestricted and can go to any of those categories, there would be 1,237,677. And what that does is it actually sets aside, if this budget is approved as presented, it sets aside a portion of those resources to deal with administrative costs in this fiscal year. And so, those numbers I just gave you represents everything else that's available for the committee and the council to appropriate if it so desires before June 30th.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Council Rand. Council Ames?
This may not be in your lane, Mr. Ailes, but I was wondering if there were some projects in the pipeline where we thought these dollars might go, that's why I waited.
Yeah, I'll defer to Ms. Richter.
So, once the budget is approved, we will...
Heather, will you go to the microphone, please? That way, everybody can hear you and the viewers can see you at home.
Thank you. So, once the fiscal year 22 budget's approved, we will move forward with our round 10 projects. The round nine projects are all currently posted on the CPC website, so they're all on there. The round 10 projects, we have a two-part application process, so the first round is whether the projects are eligible or not, and we have approximately 10 projects in the pipeline for that approval. Those approvals, or discussions, I should say, deliberations will take place in our November meeting, which is on the 18th of November. The second part of the process is that the eligible projects are deliberated upon and awarded funding, so that comes in January, more or less.
Okay.
Does that answer the question you had?
You didn't speak to specific projects, but you may not be able to, so it does... But I really appreciate the process.
Do we load the pre-apps or not?
Pre-applications are not yet up on the website, but that happens tomorrow. There are 10.
Sorry, Denise.
Sorry, let me get out.
I'm sorry as well.
Don't leave.
No, no worries.
Yep. The Community Preservation Committee received 10 pre-applications, plus a late file, and the CPC will deliberate on how best to address the late file when it meets on November 18th. The 10 pre-applications include a community slash affordable housing application from Harborlight, several open space applications, Historic Preservation, I believe it's...
Hale.
Hale Farm property. And I'm sorry, I can't recall all the open space. I think we've received something from Mark Foster, City of Beverly. So there's a wide range.
Yeah, and all the categories, all of our categories are covered by the applications, which is nice, they're not all in the same category. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Anybody on the right? Do any members of the public wish to make a comment or ask a question on this? Okay, hearing, no further questions or comments, and close our public hearing and refer that matter back to the Committee on Finance and Property. What can I ask for a motion to approve? I guess I can do what I want, right?
You can, you're the president.
For a couple more weeks, anyway. So that's what I will do, I won't refer. I would entertain a motion to approve the CPC budget for 2022.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. Thank you, everyone. I would entertain a motion, before we get to Mr. Alden St. Pierre, I would entertain a motion to take order number 184 out of Public Services, return it to the committee so that we may act on it this evening. It is an appointment to the Commission on Disabilities. Mr. David Gannon is here, and as a favor to him, because he's going to volunteer for the city, it's getting late, and we did have to turn the clocks back, so it's really 20 of 9, so...
Right. You said it, not me, Mr. Gannon.
So moved.
Second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. Mr. Gannon, podium, introduce yourself, tell us why you want to be on the Commission for Disabilities.
Good evening, everyone. I've lived in Beverly for 50 years, and medically speaking, and I don't like to brag, but since I have two new hips, a new knee, and a reconstructed other knee, I think I kind of feel what people feel when they have a disability, and when they're trying to get around Beverly. I worked for 41 years at GE. My forte was environmental health and safety, includes the ADA, Family Medical Leave Act, and obviously Workers' Comp as I was a union leader. So I think I've got a pretty good cross-section of dealing with issues. And I can tell you, what I do is I drive around and see how many handicap parking spaces there are. I can tell you pretty much where they are. And one of the things I love to see done, when you have the money, is to get rid of this brick walkway that's to the right of this building where I'm standing, is the most dangerous walk for anybody using a cane, or a walker, or with a bad back. So I'm not here for that, but I, you know, spent a lot of years at GE helping people, and I like to help people. So that's why I offered to get on the board. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Gannon?
Feel free, I'm not bashful.
All right, I think you're a great appointment.
Thanks, Paul.
No, thank you, David. And this order has two appointments. The other appointment is Mr. Aaron Swinnick. Aaron is a young man who has been involved in the city for a long time. He just got married this weekend, so maybe he's away, so I think that I would vouch for him and ask that we approve both appointments this evening.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. It's really hard not to ask for a roll call.
Really not.
I haven't done it yet. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So anytime you want to get to City Hall and get sworn in, Ms. Kent or Ms. Dixon will swear you in as a volunteer for the city.
I'll be down to see you.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, order number 206, Mr. David Alden St. Pierre, open space and... What did I forget, something?
I just noticed that we actually ordered number 183 also from Public Services. I noticed that Mr. Whitfield is here tonight. I didn't know if he wanted to go through the same motion, if that's possible.
Let's take care of David first.
Got it.
Because he is already a volunteer and...
Well, thank you.
Thank you. And you always have great audio visual.
I try. I failed last year because I couldn't get my presentation, but with Chelsea here, we're going to have some, hopefully some decent audio and visual.
Chelsea Zakis from our Planning Department. I mean, you miss people where you don't... You know, you've gone a year and a half without seeing people.
So anyways, thank you, everyone, for allowing me to come here tonight and give everyone an update on our 2021 Open Space Recreation Committee's annual report. Chelsea, you want to do the next slide? So the biggest thing we've really been working on this year, and by we, I mean Chelsea, has been updating our Open Space Recreation Plan. The OSRP is updated every seven years, and it really kind of serves as a guide of what we on our committee do. The Open Space Plan, it's got a lot of content in there, which is pretty much stable. It talks about the history of the city of Beverly, the geology, the geography, the climate, but also really focuses on what the public is looking for, and that's what we have been focusing on most recently. So Chelsea met with a number of different committees and commissions, and I believe she was here for the city council, to try to get some input from everyone, but we also had to meet with the public. And we had a table set up at Harborfest, had a table set up at a farmer's market, we had a public meeting here in these council chambers on October 6th, and there was a public survey which went out, both virtually, online, and there's a hard copy as well. And we got over 600 respondents from that survey, which is really great, because it gives us a good idea of what the community is looking for. So the next steps now are taking a lot of that data that we've gotten, compiling it, organizing it, kind of coming up with different categories, and kind of come up with what the people want, and then we'll put together a draft plan, there'll be another public meeting, and ultimately, the Open Space Recreation Plan will be done by August of next year, as long as Chelsea keeps us with all of our dates and deadlines there. Next, please. And then, of course, in addition to the Open Space Plan, we're always just working on keeping our open spaces up and available for everyone to use. One of the things that's been on our darket for quite some time is a trail out of the Greens Hill area. You know, public water access is always something that comes up all the time when people talk about the open spaces. So the trail out of Greens Hill is a great opportunity to get the public out to the waterfront access. There was a trail that was built back in 2017, and it was almost completed. There was a little bit of a controversy about the Green Street Trail Access Trailhead, but that's finally been resolved, and we should be getting our kiosk up and placed there, and hopefully the city can help us finalize the construction of that, and then the trail can officially be opened up. We were able to get an extension on our CPA funds till June of next year, so we'll hopefully have all that done by then. Next, please. And of course, we continue to look at, you know, areas all along the city of Beverly. You know, we try to identify areas of high value, whether it's for acquisition, or it's for easements, and we look at areas that are not only contiguous to our other open space areas, where there's already an established protected area, but also other parts of the city where there might not be a green space, or a natural area for someone to can just sit down and be around some trees, or some native plantings, or some wildlife. So we all try to keep a look at that, the city's list of parcels, and try to think about areas that might be good potential easements, or for acquisition. And back in 2011, there was an Emerald Necklace Vision that was proposed by the Open Space, and I think a lot of that serves as a guidepost for what we try to do, so we can try to get some connections with all of our trail systems, because there's a lot of great areas within our city. Next, please. And, you know, the Open Space Committee, we also have an opportunity to weigh in with other areas, so sometimes the Planning Board will come to us with applications, or the Conservation Commission will come to us with applications, so we get to weigh in and give our perspective on what an application might do that could maybe have some changes which might benefit the city overall, and really maintain and protect some of the green spaces that we have. And part of that is also working on the Open Space and Residential Design Plan, which ensures that developments of certain size try to keep some part of their property protected and open and green for, you know, for wildlife and for the benefit of all. And overall, since that was put in place, I think the OSRD has protected about 35 acres in the city of Beverly, so that's really great. And next, please. And then there's just our ongoing maintenance and trail stewardship. You know, we on the committee do a lot of that trail work, we're out there picking up trash and clearing up blowdowns from all these storms that we continue to have, and trying to keep the trails open and accessible, but in addition to doing it ourselves, we get to work with a lot of great people in the community, and a lot of volunteers kind of, you know, step up and work with us. And we've had some great Weebolos groups and Cub Scout groups have worked with us to go out there and do some community service, and open up the areas and pick up trash and clean up the trail areas. Recently, Jerry Paracel, our state representative, organized a little trail cleanup down at the end of Red Rock Lane for Norwood Pond. So we try to really focus on a lot of these volunteer activities and try to keep the trails open for everyone. And in addition to the trail maintenance, there's, of course, activities on the trails. Prior to COVID, which I think it's weird how we now have pre-COVID and post-COVID, but, you know, pre-COVID, we used to host Earth Day walks and some other events on our trails to get the people out to the trails, and we've had a lot of that... Recently, Jerry Paracel, our state representative, organized a little trail cleanup down at the end of Red Rock Lane for Norwood Pond. So we try to really focus on a lot of these volunteer activities and try to keep the trails open for everyone. And in addition to the trail maintenance, there's, of course, activities on the trails. Prior to COVID, which I think it's weird how we now have pre-COVID and post-COVID, but, you know, pre-COVID, we used to host Earth Day walks and some other events on our trails to get the people out to the trails, and we've had a lot of that stuff on hold, but the Beverly Council on Aging recently this year held some walks in the woods to get people out there on the trails, and it was coincidental that I was out running a couple times and kind of bumped into some of those groups, and people really seemed to enjoy being out there and seeing some of the beautiful spots that we have all over the city. Next. You know, also part of what we do is ongoing community outreach, and the prime way that we do that is using social media, you know, for better for worse it is. An easy way to get the word out, and we host a Beverly Trails Instagram page, which I try to update as often as I can, and there's the Beverly Open Space Recreation Page on Facebook. So those are our two primary ways of getting the word out about events, about trails, about conditions and whatnot, but we've also tried to get some printed press as well, and there was an article in Beverly Magazine this past summer that talked about the trails that we have and some of the challenges we've had recently with more, more people being on the trails, which is good, but then sometimes that brings with it more trouble with people cutting in new trails or leaving trash, or, you know, some of the downsides to increased access. That was a good way to get the, the word out to the public. Next, please. And our, our membership for the committee has remained pretty stable. We're almost full in terms of all the positions that we have. We are still looking for a Ward Four representative, and we'll be looking for someone from the Parks and Recreation Committee to sit on our, our committee as well. Otherwise, I think the city is pretty well represented, and when we get together at our meetings, we've got, you know, perspective from people all over the city, so we're never trying to focus just on one part. And next. And that's it, you know, pretty much just a chance to come and talk about what we do and see if anyone has any questions for me.
Thank you, David. Any questions?
Just have one.
Of course, Councilor Ames.
Thank you. I'm the Ward Three Counselor, and so I, I had the pleasure of appointing Ally Dudley...
Yes.
...to your committee, and I, I'm so impressed with your focus downtown and your support of people who don't have backyards or open spaces. It really feels like you're really empowering her tremendously, and we've been working to try to work on some Gloucester Crossing properties and neighbor, and parks, and I think the support from the committee has been phenomenal, so thank you.
Oh, no, thank you, a hundred percent. I mean, just the chance to be in an urban area and find a spot to sit and be near a tree and be near some native plantings. I think so much research is out there about the health benefits of just being around trees and plants. I mean, it's so important, and I think...
Yes.
Parts of the city that don't have that to walk to, it's really vital to get those areas put in place.
And even in their own back, you know, not having backyards, not having access...
Yep.
...to open space themselves, so this is, I think it's a great shift, a little bit of a shift for the city to be able to focus downtown. I think it's great.
Yeah, I think Allison's doing a great job.
Yes, she is, she is, thanks.
Sure.
Councilor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thank you. Growing up in Everett City, nothing but pavement, and Greens Hill's been something that's been really introduced to me in the last few months since trying to get that whole project to the conclusion and bring in, what you were saying, the trailhead and the kiosk up and all that, so it's been really informative and educational for me the last few months, even working with Charlie Mann, so I just want to thank you for all the work you're doing.
No, no problem, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Feldman.
I really, I don't have any questions, because we do communicate frequently about a lot of these issues, and I'm just so thankful for the work that you do as a volunteer for the city. My children and I, there are two Feldmans in one of those pictures up there that you...
I know, you're a one.
And, you know, one of my first things that I actually did as a city councillor here in Beverly was reappoint you to the Chair of the Committee, and I mean...
Some type of person.
I'd like to take all the credit for that, you know, but, but I'm just, I'm really grateful, because it's, it's a volunteer position, and the amount of expertise and that we get out of the work and your commitment to the city is just, I just, I, I don't know how you found the time, but it's amazing, and I'm also really appreciative of all of the, the trail signs that have gone up over the last two years, really letting people know, because a lot of those open space trails are, have been hidden, and it often took a lot of effort to explain to people where they were, so I very much appreciated those not getting lost constantly, going to try and find new trailheads, so, so thank you so much for your work.
No problem, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, David, a couple things. I think with COVID, it was so important that people had places to go outside. I know I had never been to Norwood's Pond in the thirty-some-odd years I've lived here, and it was a great spot last winter to go and get the kids off the phone and get them out to see how beautiful Beverly can be. I mean, there's some spots in Norwood Pond, around Norwood Pond, where you could stand and you could think that you were in the woods in New Hampshire or Maine. It seems so remote, yet it's right down the end of El Nueve. Second, you mentioned the OSRD, the Open Space and Residential Design Ordinance, which was so important, keeping developments small, small footprints and more open space, and you always have to thank Councilor Housman for working on that back in the, I don't know, twenty, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, a long time ago.
A while ago, with John Thompson, when, when he was Chair of the Planning Board.
Yeah, so that was very important in terms of development here in the City of Beverly. And finally, Ward Four, you need a...
Yeah, I, I was going to say, I have, I have some folks in mind.
Okay.
So...
That'd be great.
Be in touch by email.
Perfect, yeah, but you get, Chelsea, I think, would be the perfect contact point for that, so that'd be great.
Sounds great.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
All right, we look forward to hearing from you again soon.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
It's just receiving, place on file. I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file that report.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. Our public speakers have been very, very patient, so let's go, we have three of them. Let's go to Anita Deely of 26 Juniper Street. Ms. Deely, microphone, you're good.
Dear Beverly City Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. I hope you will consider a chance for me to present more at a future City Council meeting for discussion. Our small farm, Beverly Bee, sells bees, honey, beeswax, eggs, beeswax candles, and chickens produced on our farm. Our income comes from agriculture. Our honey has won numerous awards for its taste and our sustainable beekeeping methods. We have a store in Salem where we sell products from our farm. We got our start selling at the Beverly Farmer's Market and have grown over the past ten years. We sell our farm products at many farmer's markets across the state every single week, including Copley Square, Rosendale, and Union Square Farmer's Market. We have thousands of local customers that purchase honey, eggs, bees, and bee products from us. We accept farmer's market coupons for low-income seniors and SNAP payments for products sold at the farmer's markets we attend. We have provided thousands of dollars worth of food to low-income customers. My husband and I work full-time in our farming business, and we have five employees who work for us. We are currently hiring. Prior to committing full-time to our farming business, I worked as a Massachusetts State Apiary Inspector for six years, where I inspected honeybeehives across the state for health and disease and helped to educate beekeepers. I continue to work to protect bees and am on several nonprofit boards, including the National Pollinators Stewardship Council, the Massachusetts Beekeepers Association, and I'm on the state-appointed mosquito control task force. We raise bees and chickens at our farm in Beverly. Right now, we have thirty-four chickens and beehives at our farm. We want to continue to keep chickens, hens, and roosters the way we have been, and to grow our business slowly in a sustainable way as a small, local farm, adding other poultry and animals sometime in the future. The number of chickens we have will grow and shrink depending on what we are doing with them. If we are growing birds to sell, some will be around only for a few weeks or a few months out of the year. As we are a farming business, the birds, the number of the birds we have at any given time is not a static number, it is always changing. One of the types of chickens we raise is called the Golden Campan. This heritage breed of chicken is critically endangered with fewer than five hundred breeding birds in the United States. You need a hen and a rooster to have a pair of breeding chickens to get fertilized eggs. Our roosters are necessary to raise and breed chickens, protect the flock, and be sustainable. In addition, we free-range our chickens on our farm to keep them healthier and happier. There is a big difference between free-range chicken farming and poultry farming that has thousands of poultry contained inside a building. Free-range hens must be outdoors, weather permitting, for at least six hours a day. Our farm is on a nineteen-acre property surrounded by woods and conservation land. We follow generally acceptable agricultural practices and intend to continue to do so. Our chickens wander outside during the day and are kept inside in insulated coop at night to protect them from nighttime predators. The coop prevents the rooster's crow from being heard unless you are near the coop. During the day, they wander in the grass weeds and woods, eating troublesome insects such as ticks, termites, and moss that are parasitic to the beehives. This works symbiotically with our land, allowing us to work outside without being attacked by ticks or having to use pesticides that may harm our bees. When you free-range chickens, they're vulnerable to predators, including hawks, foxes, coyotes, weasels, raccoons, and more. Roosters offer protection from the hens. To keep hens safe, roosters will often herd their flock into the same general area and will sound the alarm when danger is near. A rooster will also fend off attackers or sacrifice himself for the flock. We have had roosters fend off foxes and hawks to protect our hens. Roosters are a normal part of chicken farming, as they are the male counterpart to chickens, and are needed to be a sustainable farm, make fertilized eggs, and breed chickens. Unfortunately, as you may be aware, we have been having a problem with the Beverly Board of Health as it relates to our chickens, roosters, and animals on our farm. According to state and Beverly zoning laws, we are allowed to do agriculture on our property. We are doing nothing wrong, and we're not in violation of our conservation restriction. However, the Board of Health has decided we are not allowed to keep any animals at all on our property beyond thirty-six chickens, and they are trying to regulate us the same as someone who has chickens as pets. This overregulation of our farm by the Board of Health is unreasonable, as their order prevents our small, sustainable farm from being able to grow and maintain itself financially in the long run. The order runs counter to the law and prevents us from being able to provide the community with our local farm products raised in a sustainable way. I would like to ask the Council for a chance to present more at a future meeting, so we could be able to discuss this further. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita, absolutely. Try to, maybe before the end of the year, schedule something with Ms. Kent, maybe at one of our December meetings.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Our next speaker is Andy Varela. Mr. Varela, thank you.
Again, Andy Varela, thank you, Council, for having us here. My name is Andy Varela. I co-own and operate Salem's only revenue-producing farm, Maitland Mountain Farm. We've been in business for about ten years. Just like the Deelys, about four years ago, we had an issue with the Building Department where they did not accept us as an agricultural entity. Basically, things have quieted down. What has happened before, within that time, is we were able to educate our city departments on what the purview of Forty-Eighth Section Three, being an agriculture exempt use production by right within the Commonwealth. You know, going forward, you know, I know the Board of Health is giving the Deelys a hard time, they're trying to regulate them on only having a certain number of chickens. When you look at Massachusetts General Law, One-eleven, Section One-twenty-five-A, it clearly states that as long as a farm is following generally acceptable practices, they cannot be regulated or unreasonably regulated, which is, seems like the city solicitor has, is trying to make a legal recommendation, putting the Deelys in a box as far as trying to regulate them. I understand that people have backyard chickens. You know what? If you're in a residential zone, there are rules stating how many chickens you can have, and that's completely reasonable. But if you're in agricultural production, that is not reasonable, and that's what's happening right now. What I think for the City Council would be beneficial is for you guys to be proactive. I'm also a part of Salem's Food Policy Council, where we have drafted an agricultural ordinance which strengthens basically what you can do as a resident or an agricultural entity within your municipality. We have it right now in the Committee, Public Health and Safety. It'll probably be tabled until January, but going forward, this is something as a Ward Seven City Councilor-elect going for January, I would like to share with your chamber and your council going forward, so we can actually strengthen laws and protect residents that are trying to tackle food insecurity, feed their community, as well as just feed themselves with a reasonable act of having chickens and growing vegetables. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Varela. And Julie Potter Brown.
Thank you.
Hello, Julie.
Hello, greetings. So my name is Julie Potier-Brown, and I am the Operations Manager of an organization called the Farm Direct Co-op, and we've been in existence since nineteen ninety-three, and we are actually customers of the Deelys as well as Maitland Mountain Farm. I have had the privilege of working with what I would call microfarms, who have then become small farms, who have then become small businesses, and I will go out of my way to actually go support a small farm, even if their product is a little bit pricier or it's, they're not quite there yet, because I want to give them the opportunity. And I would encourage, as Andy just said, Councilor Varela-elect, to be proactive as to what the city is hoping to support, because we're in this post-pandemic time, right? People aren't necessarily going back to work. Cottage industries are going to be erupting, and people are going to be wanting to sell their products, and is there something on the books? Is there a way for that to happen? I, I don't know the, what's happening in Beverly. I'm also on the Food Policy Council in Salem, and we are path, trying to pass the Urban Agriculture Ordinance, and Somerville, I believe, is the, is the community that we are following that has successfully done so. But I think in, as well as supporting the Deelys and their endeavors, I just want to encourage cottage industry. I want to encourage farm-to-fork. I want to encourage proactive and not reactive, to looking at what other communities are doing to help pave the way for those coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, everyone. Anita, look forward to hearing from you again soon, and Councilor-elect Varela, congratulations. Good luck. We're normal compared to Salem, you know.
Yikes.
No, it's all, it's great. You're, you're going to do a great job, and please, when you get something solid after you get sworn in, reach out to somebody over here in Beverly. I would say reach out to Councilor Rand, whereas Councilor Rand's baby is the Farmer's Market, perhaps something that she can champion come January.
Absolutely.
It's okay to volunteer, you?
Yeah.
All right.
I have, I have draft forms of these things already tucked away, so yeah.
Excellent. Good stuff. Sure, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our previous meetings, which were held all virtual, correct?
Mm-hmm.
On October fourth, twenty twenty-one, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, and finally, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, and that was a committee meeting of Legal Affairs and Public Services.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. I'm dying to say roll call.
I know.
Okay. Communications from his honor, the mayor.
Dear Honorable City Council, enclosed please find a proposed order amending Beverly Ordinance, Section Sixty-nine dash four, vacations. Due to the ongoing COVID-nineteen pandemic, there continue to be challenges to city employees being able to use their accrued vacation pays. Under the current language of Section Sixty-nine dash four, city employees are only able to roll over ten vacation days from one calendar year to the next, with the rollover date being December thirty-first. This proposed amendment would extend the rollover date to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, increase the number of carryover days from ten to twelve. This amendment relates only to the calendar year twenty twenty-one vacation time. Please initiate action on this matter at next City Council meeting, Monday, November eighth. Thank you sincerely yours, Michael P. K. Hill, Mayor.
Please refer to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Communications from other city offices and boards.
Order Number One-ninety-six, the, from Council Rotundo, the by the annual report for the April twenty twenty-one, September twenty twenty-one, Beverley-Haber Management Report.
I would entertain a motion and receive that and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. Council Rotundo, we see as your council appointment to that committee, do you want to try to get Paul Earl to come by before one of our last meetings?
Absolutely.
Go over it, I know he would enjoy that. Thank you. Communications, applications... Communications, applications, and petitions.
Order number 197, from National Grid, Plan 294962 to J.O. pole on Chou-Tau Ave.
What's our next meeting?
22nd.
22nd. I'd entertain a motion to set that public hearing for November 20, Monday, November 22nd at 7:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
In favor, aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Order number 198, from National Grid, Plan 30397864, to install concrete encased near existing poles on Bow Street in Mantle.
And I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing for Monday, November 22nd at 7:45.
So moved.
Second.
In favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Order 199, relating to National Grid, Plan 28322468, Railville Avenue.
And entertain a motion to set that public hearing for November 22nd, Monday, at 8:00.
So moved.
Second.
In favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Order number 200, related to New England Power Company, DBA National Grid, the final decision approval to construct a new 115 KV underground cable in the cities of Salem and Beverly, and a new switching station in Salem, and to modify two existing substations in Beverly.
And that is a receiving place on file. No?
Mr. President, I would request that that be referred jointly to-
Sure.
-Legal Affairs and Public Services.
I would agree. Please refer that to the Committees on Legal Affairs and Public Services. Thank you, councillor Housman.
Order number 201, Department of Environmental Protection Waterways Regulation Program, 67 Water Street.
And I'd entertain a motion to receive and place that one on file.
Second.
In favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Order 202, Department of Environmental Protection Waterway Regulation Program, 011-47A, Water Street, in Water Street.
Yep, motion to receive and place on file.
So moved.
Second.
And we're finally getting good at this, the seconds. That's great, council flowers.
Thank you.
You're going to get real frustrated when nobody gives you a motion or a second. But you'll laugh at it. Motion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Order number 203, Boston Gas Company, DBA National Grid, notice of filing and public hearing.
Receiving place on file, motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. We need to break for committee?
Whatever way you want to do it. I have to get the committee stuff in. Christine, if you're not going to break.
I would entertain a motion to take a brief recess for some committee work.
So moved. Second.
In favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. But no committees have to meet. You're just compiling everything.
I didn't know what you were doing. I thought you were breaking for committee.
Yeah, I just did.
Okay. I'm not the committee.
Oh, okay. All right. Ms. Dixon, what committees have to meet?
Legal Affairs. Public Services.
Okay. So why does Legal Affairs meet right here, and then Public Services will meet right after that? Right here, on TV. Kim can keep the camera rolling.
Okay. And that's for legal affairs.
Do we need to move?
That's for Monday, yeah. But I have-
I did too.
You can stay there.
But I still had to give to you.
I'm going to go up here, I guess.
Yes.
I'm not sure exactly.
We'll figure it out tomorrow.
The flag is what you're going to. Are we mad?
So you guys have never hardly gone through this, or at least it's been a very long time. So the Legal Affairs Subcommittee will deal with whatever left over on our agenda, will take action, or I'll hold them, like, and then we'll simply, so.
Which one are, let me just plug.
Three will be a hold, and this one appointment will just vote to approve her appointments.
Okay. We can do that.
Legal first.
Legal first.
You want to sit in the middle? Usually you go sit in the middle.
Okay. We can go sit. We can go change.
Just because then they can do a great shot on you.
I don't want to move my computer. I don't have it printed out, but that's why I'm just-
We're meeting after them here, so.
So I am really wanting to-
I'm going to move over here. I don't have-
You two can move closer to Scott.
They have appointments? They're moved.
You want your committee over here, right?
I'm just going to take care of it from here.
You don't want to move over by you?
Nope, because we're going to be really fast.
Okay.
All right, and I'll just move on here. Yes.
So I want to do-
Yeah, so I will, yeah.
So I'm going to call to order Legal Affairs, tell them what we're doing, and then we're going to adjourn.
Which page of which agenda is this?
Call to order-
I swear I had like four different-
Calling to order Subcommittee on Legal Affairs.
The last one?
Folks.
November 5th, because there's revised regular.
Yeah. Quiet. I'm calling to order the Committee on Legal Affairs. We have three orders on our agenda. Order 134, Rodent Management, that's on hold. We're taking no action on that tonight. Orders number 193 and 194 both relate to the National Grid Regional Transmission Reliability Project. We're also holding that. We're taking no action on that tonight. There'll be a Subcommittee meeting next Monday evening at 7:00 PM to discuss that. That'll be a joint Subcommittee meeting with Public Services. So we're taking no action on those two orders. The last and final order we have is Order 182, so appointment to the Conservation Commission, and we are also holding that. We have, I've exchanged correspondence with the mayor's office, asking that when new appointments are made, he provide information ahead of time to the Subcommittee, to the council, so that we can learn something about their background before we are asked to make any kind of decision about them. So far, that request has, has not been fulfilled by the mayor's office, so we will hold that matter until we receive information from the mayor's office. On that, as we have no further business, make, I'll accept a motion to adjourn Legal Affairs for this evening.
Motion to adjourn Legal Affairs.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye. We are adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.
It's a tough one. Glad we didn't move. [Laughter] We have just a few orders that we need to take care of this evening. We have a few that are being held, so on our agenda, Orders 191, 193, and 194 are all being held. Just point of reference, 191 was councillor Ames' request for a public discussion on dedicated pickleball courts. That will be held till a special meeting on 11/29 of our Subcommittee at 6:30 PM. Orders 193 and 194 relate to the National Grid Regional Reliability Transmission Project that councillor Housman just referred to. Those are being held for a meeting with both Public Services and Legal Affairs for next Monday at 7:00 PM, the 15th. And Order 184 were appointments to the Commission for Disabilities that we took care of already in our meeting. So we need to come back around to Order 183, the appointment of Mr. Berrence Whitfield to serve on the Council of Aging. And Mr. Whitfield was here. I'm afraid we might have lost him in the break, but councillors, do you have any questions, discussion, or I would entertain a motion to approve this appointment?
I move we approve. Mr. Whitfield?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So Mr. Whitfield, we approve to serve on the Council on Aging. Order 186, appointment, Mr. Kevin Hoben to serve on the Beverly Parks and Recreation Commission.
He was here as well, but I would move to appoint him as well.
Is there a second, councillors?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And Order 187, reappointment, Mr. Kevin Galant to serve on the Commission for Disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then I will entertain a motion to close Public Services.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Thank you.
We approved the CPC budget. You don't have to read that one.
Right. So I just do the-
You knew that. That's all it was?
Well, yeah. You got a lot.
Oh, okay. You said you had a lot. All right. Okay. All good.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I saw.
Hang on.
Reports from committees.
Order number 183, the Committee on Public Services, for the appointment of Mr. Berrence Whitfield to serve on the Council on Aging. Have considered said matter and beg leave to report as follows. Recommend the council approve the appointments.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. That's a great appointment. One of the coolest guys in the city.
Order number 187, Committee on Public Services, to whom to refer the matter of the reappointment of Mr. Kevin Galant to serve on the Commission for Disabilities. Have considered said matter and beg leave to report as follows. Recommend the council approve the appointment.
And questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Order number 186, the Committee on Public Service, to whom to refer the matter of the appointment of Mr. Kevin Hoben to serve on the public, to the Beverly Parks and Recreation Commission. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follows. Recommend the council approve the appointment.
And that was a reappointment.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
Reappointment. Mr. Hoben was here, but it got a little late for him, so I told him that he could go home and that we would all vouch for councillor Hoben.
I'm sure that's a re, it didn't say appointment.
Yeah, it's a reappointment.
Okay. Mayor didn't.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Mm-hmm.
Councillor Hoben was right before you, councillor Housman.
He was. My predecessor.
And before that, I was councillor McGlynn.
It was.
Wow.
Long, long-
Does anybody have anything else to add? Because that's all we have left for council business. I'm hoping that it lasts more than six minutes, but councillor Rotundo, what do you have? Veterans Day.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make that quick. Thank you, Mr. President. So a few things that are going on this week to honor our veterans. We have a breakfast at the Senior Center, the 10th at 9:00 AM. There'll be an assembly at the middle school in the 10th at 1:15. Then there's several events being hosted on actual Veterans Day. There's the Hospital Vietnam Memorial at 10:00 AM at Beverly Hospital. The primary event, which is at Ellis Square, will be at 11:00 AM. And then Saturday, there's an event at Beverly High School at 6:30. It's going to have the commander of the USS Constitution there, and it's hosted with the junior ROTC as well.
Thank you, councillor Rotundo.
No, thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else? Okay, our next city council meeting will be on Monday, November 22nd, at 7:00 PM. And are we all comfortable with being live again?
Yes.
And your committee meetings you'll have over the next two weeks, you're going to do those virtually or you'll be here?
Here.
Yeah, great. Good stuff. Thank you to BevCam. Thank you to everybody for being here. Special thanks to councillor Copeland, the great effort he put in in calendar year 2021, that's for sure. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I know, I just-
So moved.
That was sad.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine to, eight to zero. We are adjourned.